Okay, let's see, it's Thursday, December 12th for the Acton School Committee Monthly Meeting, and we'll begin with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, we just will not do executive session tonight as Judy Shane is out. And if I could, I'll just mention Judy is, Judy's out this evening. Our thoughts and prayers go to Judy and, and the Shains and Andy and his siblings as Rod, Shane passed away yesterday afternoon. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that's what Judy is, and we expect to see her next month, but again, deeply to Judy and her family, our thoughts and prayers go out to you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay, we'll go on to something else. How about the consent agenda? Does anybody have any objections to the consent agenda?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay. Let's see, how about any chair reports and the superintendents, any questions for the administrators? President? Anybody have any?
Would you like me to say my three or four bullets first, and then you might have any questions from anybody else in the room? So just quickly, a thank you to Bridget Whitman, who kind of catered our little holiday reception for the school committee. We've been doing that the last few years, and she does an excellent job, everything, right down to the tree-shaped cupcakes, just every little thing about bringing in the holidays for us. So thank you, Bridget, for doing that for us. We've had one snow day and one delay. The delay was a good call because the day was nice after 10 o'clock. It was right about 10 o'clock when kids arrived, but the day turned pretty well for us. Never easy when you're the only school that's open, and it's a bad day. It was a good day. Not so much the second day. The second day, it snowed all day, and it was a good day to call school. So we're at a day that, remember, the delays don't count as a snow day. So we're at a day, and we're heading into holiday break, and I anticipate that the weather next week is just not going to be great, but I don't see any big storms coming. Last year, we had three by Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And we were doing pretty good. Yeah? Holiday concert was great. I had, the place was packed, as always. The kids did a great job. Mr. Corcoran did a great job. It was 45 minutes, we didn't do an intermission, and we wove the band right into it, which was neat. So they had a chance to play while everybody was in the house, which I thought was really, really cool.
That was great.
A little different. And school break is next Friday, the 20th through January 1st, and we'll be back to school on January 2nd. And finally, Mike, do we have a new camera person?
We do. I'd like everybody to meet Caitlin Long, a former Acton alumni, graduated, you know, you graduated class of 2016, was it?
Something like that.
Anyway, she's now a member of the APAT camera production team. She's doing a great job covering meetings, and welcome aboard.
Right. See you, Caitlin. Good hire, Mike. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, so we have a report here from Lori Lodge, anything new?
Are you going on to the math? Is that what you're doing?
Well, I'm not gonna, it says, oh, okay.
Any other questions from the committee?
No, okay, no?
Yeah, we'll start with math, and then we'll do safety care. I'll kind of help you with that.
Yep.
Okay, well, we can go on to that.
Well, we can look at the math, it's important.
Oh, okay, oh, I see, you got a hand up.
Yep. So I wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dig into the math data, and I pulled all of the data on the kids that fell below state expectations and then well below state expectations. And so what I have there is just numbers of kids and how many points below they were falling, because I wanted to see how many kids we had sitting on maybe the bubble between below expectations and then meeting expectations. So the bottom chart shows that we have 12, we have 24 kids that were five points away from meeting expectations. So that, you know, prompts even more questions about, so what is, what was it that those 24 kids missed? You know, was it more the multiple choice? Was it explaining the constructed response and explaining math reasoning? And so then you start digging in a little bit deeper for those particular kids, and how do we move, you know, how do we move all kids, but then how do we specifically get at those kids who are just right there and move them up to meeting expectations? And then I looked at the well below, and there's 31 kids that sit in that category right now, but 18 of them are almost to the below state expectations. So it's really about looking at those kids and figuring out what are the misconceptions, you know, what concepts are they missing? So then I started thinking, are these the same kids that were below the year before and the year before? Kids who have taken this three years in a row? Are, is it the same kids every year that are falling into these categories? So I had sheets on my desk, and I was highlighting names, and it is, it is the same kids in these categories for the last three years, for the three years that I could pull. So kids that are currently in eighth grade, I looked at seventh grade, sixth grade, fifth grade for those kids, and it's the same kids. And so anywhere I could pull two or three years of data of kids, I was looking across. And then I wondered, are those the same kids right now that we looked at for NWEA in the fall that fell below? And I was able, they are the same kids. So you can see at the bottom, my questions are, so I just kind of bulleted it there, you know, data over the past three years, it's the same kids. I compared it to NWEA again, it's the same kids. So what are we doing differently? Or providing in addition to what they're already getting for extra support to those students? And are cohorts aware that it's those same kids over time? So that's what I'll be taking to cohort meetings coming up, probably not next week, but in January. And, and putting those kids' names on the table and asking, what are we doing for these kids? Because these are the kids that are showing, year after year after year, are meeting expectations. So what is it that they need? And do we need to look at their individual test data and how they're answering? And then the lowest scores, when you look across the board, are still falling in that number sense category. Kids are really missing some foundational pieces of place value and number sense and manipulating numbers. And why, you know, two-digit times two-digit multiplication, and why do you get this answer, and why does it work that way? So instead of just learning a procedure, why does that procedure work? And, and if I just flip some numbers around, does it work the same way? And so I don't know if there's enough understanding of how numbers work and the manipulation of numbers for kids to get that level of understanding that they need, and that's continually built on as they move up through the grades.
So, yeah, I, um, we have like Title I. Is there such a thing as Title I for math?
Yep, yep.
But no one ever uses it? I've never seen it.
We don't have enough support for that right now, as far as, you know, people or to provide that additional support for our kids.
But what about a tutor, or after-school tutor?
Right, so we're working with supporting literacy. There is, we are supporting eight kids right now in math, in first and second grades, the way our schoolwide's working. But that's just, you know, eight kids right now getting additional math support through Title I.
I know, but I was wondering also, is it from, you just have numbers, and then all of a sudden, there's words, and you have to read sentences to get to the answer?
It's right, and there's a lot of language.
So is that a problem?
Yep, yep, yep. Language plays, plays a, reading plays a role in reading the problems and understanding what the words are, and, yeah, because then there's a whole piece to the math vocabulary.
Right.
You know, and what does it mean?
Right.
When we get to new business number eight, I'll talk a little bit about we know the who right now. We, we need to really talk about what are we going to do.
Yeah.
I just want to float a few ideas and where our thinking is currently.
So the, the ones that you said that are just a couple of points from being on that below, is that like one or two problems makes up a point?
Could be, yeah, yep.
Okay.
It could be, you know, one constructive response in math or an extended response could be worth two or four points.
Right, so it could be literally one point, one, one question that put them under versus over.
And some of them sat right on, there was like zero point difference, I mean, they were right on that edge.
Wouldn't take much.
It wouldn't take much, and it could be just that level of the reading of the problem and understanding what they're being asked to.
It's great, though, that you were able to dig down and find, you know, trends, trends to find out who needs what.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, because they got to get to the eighth grade, right?
Mm, yeah.
And we, I just want to remind you, we've seen an uptick in our literacy with some of our interventions, so we know that's working. And it's time to address math.
That should end up helping math. I'm just saying.
Right, no, good point, good point.
Yeah, it should. Yep, yep. Then the other thing John asked to share was, we are doing de-escalation training with staff. We've had 10 staff members that have finished the first half of that. Next week, they'll finish the second half, and then we'll start a new group in January. And then what does that de-escalation training look like? So on the first side of this handout, you'll see the topics that Michelle Libby is going through. You can probably pipe in.
Yeah, I'll help you with this, too.
So on one side are the topics that she's covering as part of this training. And then on the other side, she gave me sort of the strategies that are included when you're using a help strategy, the prompt strategy, or the wait strategy. So this is some of the information and the topics that were, that Michelle is, is training staff to use.
So safety care is one of probably several brandings of, of, of working with kids in a safe manner. So there's a couple of levels to this. One is de-escalation, de-escalation training. So when a student is starting to perk up a little bit in behaviors, and you can see that if we keep, I call it amping it up, we're probably going to be, as I call, off to the races with this person. So we want this person to become more calm and make better behavior choices. Anybody can be trained to do that, and it was my hope that we have everybody in the organization trained, so that we're using the right language and using the right skills, like the term wait, the wait strategy. Why am I talking? I love that, wait, sometimes just not talking. The kid doesn't want to hear your voice, just stop talking. But as adults, we tend to talk at kids all the time, just stop. And you'd be amazed at how calm they might get if I stopped talking at them. So the strategy is to de-escalate, you know, the child and the human behavior. The other side of this is, some of us also need to be trained to safely remove a student or keeping him or her from hurting themselves or another kid.
Yep.
And that training is for a select few.
Mm-hmm.
And there are people you don't train for that, like our social worker. We don't want our social worker doing that kind of work. She needs to be somebody different for these kids. So there's a few of us that can do that. The hope is we get everybody to do the de-escalation, and it's, Sharon, it's also necessary as part of Chapter 33.
Yes, we're required by law to have a team of certified trained people who can, you know, actually-
The hands-on piece.
Do hands-on in the event that it's necessary.
If it's necessary, yeah.
So we're, we're actually getting, Chad is here tonight, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
We're sending Chad to be our second trained trainer. He is going to be a trainer.
Yes.
So he will be, he and Michelle will be able to each train 10, 20 people at a time, I believe, it's 20 people, right?
Yeah, 10, 10 to 1.
10 to 1, yeah, but she's doing two trainings, right?
Right, right.
10 and 10. So we've been, we've been able to increase our capacity to, because every year, we have to get recertified in, you know, through one day of training. So thank you, Chad, for offering, for accepting that.
Yes, thank you very much. It would be helpful. I think it's important for the public to know, and anybody who's in the building, if Johnny's having a bad day, and it looks like there's a bunch of adults standing around, it's because that's what we're doing, is making sure Johnny's safe. And people are like, well, why don't they just grab Johnny and take him off somewhere? Because he looks like he's being a real pain in the butt right now. And it's because Johnny is, and we all agree, but that's not really how it works. A kid crying and laying on the floor is just a kid crying and laying on the floor, is what I say. It, it is a disruption, but it's a kid crying and laying on the floor. That doesn't mean we have the right to remove him or her, so you work with him. And I think it's important that people understand the parameters by which we work as educators. If Johnny's going to hurt somebody or himself, then there are safe ways to prevent that.
Yep.
There are safe ways to take care of that. So I just, I thought it was important to get this kind of out to the committee, to know that we're still on this, and the goal is to have everybody in the organization trained, and we're hoping to have the ed techs trained in that March day, and we're going to try to figure out how we're going to do that and use some time with the ERD schedule. Lori's done a great job at figuring out who stays the two extra hours and who doesn't, so that everybody has equity and everybody gets trained. So we're on kind of a rolling schedule to get this done. It's working nicely.
Thank you. Is that all we have for that? Anything else we need to discuss from?
Thank you, Mrs. Lodge.
I'll set that on that. We don't need to, just, okay. So no long-range planning, nothing to discuss there?
Did not need.
Okay, yep. So we have policies, and these are reviews.
These are all reviews, right?
Yep. So do you want to just read off what they are, and then we can do it all in one lump sum? Or we're going to discuss each one?
One lump sum.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Well, I read them, and there's like three strikeouts to fix superintendent to superintendent principal, I mean-
Yeah, yeah. They were reviews.
Punctuation. Yeah, there's not much going on. And I can't believe some of these things have been placed, and they didn't need to major league changes, which is good, obviously, we're doing something right.
Well, we're only on the E in the alphabet.
Yes, I noticed. I said they must be on Es.
Plus all these other things, I mean, it's just incredible, I mean, they, they're trying, all right, so we have EBAA, chemical hazards, EBAB, hazard communication policy, EBABI, hazard communication plan, EBCA, crisis response, EBCB, fire drills. We have some more, EBCF, automated external defibrillators, and ECB, pest management, meaning bugs and stuff.
Yeah, so the other thing is, they clarify, it's no longer K through A, but pre-K through A. So I mean, there really wasn't much in change.
And these are all, like I said, my, the goal is to try to get through all our policies-
Put a review date.
And get everything, you know, really up to date, and then that way, we could just rotate them and just have new ones as they come in, so we're getting there.
Yep.
We don't really have a whole lot, because we've done quite a few, so we're getting there.
Okay.
You're up to E.
Huh?
Yeah, we're up to E. All right, anybody have, make a motion that we accept these in a group?
I'll make a motion to accept the ones you just said, for review.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that all passed.
Thank you.
So now we're on all business, we have all business. Well, I have, did we hear anything from the Warren Finance Committee as to, maybe it's too early to-
We're going to be, we're going to put our calendars together for January. Kim and I will update you, and then we'll give out a master calendar, and my hope is to start our first, first meeting with norms and what would Warren Finance like for information when we get back to the review process, and then we'll get into it article by article. I think comparable data, whether they ask for it or not, is something that I'll have available for schools like, like our school, like size. And we found them, they're just not in York County.
Yeah.
So we compare to like schools, not neighboring schools, you know.
Don't kid me, how about new business?
Eight-one math resources is something I asked to put on there. So earlier, I mentioned that when we get to eight, I was just, I wanted to just kind of have a conversation a little bit about the so what now. We know who our math students are, we know that our math scores are flat, if not heading in the other direction, while our literacy scores are getting better. So I think it's, it's time we need to address this, and I do think that it may be a function and part of the budget process as well. So I wanted to get this in January, just kind of put out there that I did meet with the cohort leaders this week and had some ideas. Chad was a cohort leader, he just had to step out, but he was there, and I kind of bounced the idea off of, if it was as simple as getting another curriculum, we would have already gotten another curriculum. So I really am thinking that at some level, we need to kind of give a booster shot to professional development, utilizing our ERDs and utilizing some expertise. What that looks like, I can't tell you. What I can tell you is, our revenue, we don't know what that is yet, but we do know that we're going to get a little bit of revenue as being part of the regional service center, where we work with our buses and our, and our printing, business equipment unlimited. That's allowed us to get a little bit of kickback, but, but not, it isn't, I'm not going to give a number right now, but it's not enough to like go hire somebody. So there's a piece, though, that, that's coming in that we didn't have before. We've also discovered, we have some students with, that come here on a waiver, if they come from a district that receives more state subsidies than us, we receive that for those students that come here, and we have those students, there's a little bit there, too. And we don't yet know with our disadvantaged students. I do know with our disadvantaged students, our numbers are down, and I was very surprised when I saw that, given the demographics of our kids. But a lot of our most at-risk students that fit that, that, that category, that gives us the bump for economically disadvantaged, have moved. Or they were in a foster setting, and then the foster setting is either not there anymore, or they got adopted, but things have changed to our profile of our students, so that our numbers are actually a little lower than they were last year. And last year, we didn't see any economically disadvantaged students. I'll give you the however to that. This Kim will tell you, they kind of make adjustments and look at this late in the process. So it doesn't mean that we're out of the ring on this, it just means that our numbers aren't as good as they were last year for this kind of a booster shot for funding, but the state, the state formula for this may, may also be in flux, so we don't know. Across the board and talking with other districts, I'm also hearing that their economically disadvantaged populations are down, too, because the economy's good. Makes sense, housing is available, people are working, so across the state, we're seeing it look different, so maybe the matrix, the metrics that's used for determining will change, too. Let's see. So we'll wait and see what the revenue looks like. What I'm saying tonight in looking at the budget is, Kim and I have some work to do and look at the budget, but the budget's been 1% or less the last four years, and we need to do something about math. I can't tell you today if that means it's going to be 1% or less and help math, it'd be great if we could, but I think we need to take this seriously. And I think at some level, either some sort of consulting help or a one-year position that focuses on helping our teachers learn how to get our youngest learners to learn math in a way that's going to help them with their achievement, and also help some of these tier-three type kids that we've already identified do better at math. That'd be great, because you really have to start at the bottom, and as they learn math, with Chad, and then Patty, and then Mark's group, by the time they hit Mark, they know how to do math, and it needs to be a consistent way of doing math. It can't change in fifth, uh, third grade. You can't get it to Patty's room, and all of a sudden, they're doing a different kind of math.
Right.
So we really got to fundamentally look at that, and I'm thinking, let's take a year and really put some effort into this, just like we do with PBIS, and what we did, look at the culture change. And that's ongoing. Once you do PBIS, you're always working at it, and you're making it better, but it doesn't go away, and you're always just kind of working with it. I see math and literacy the same, and we have to do this within a context of proficiency-based. What does this look like in a proficiency-based model? And we're also looking at a learning management system change in the next year or so, so that stars are aligning for this math change, the time is right. We know there's a need, there may be some change in staff over the time, our population's getting a little older, we're looking at a new learning, learning management system. We may or may not have some extra state funds, we'll see. So you'll hear more from me on this as we look at the budget, and I'll be, I'll be giving you some ideas that we can talk about, and then probably be looking for some support for those ideas. What does it mean at the end of the day in the overall FY21 budget? I don't know. But if it's too much, it's too much. If it's just right, it's just right. We'll have to determine that when we get there, but I wanted to let you know early in the process, there's, there's something we need to fix, and we-
Is there any way you could go back to how they taught it 50 years ago? Somehow, somehow, we didn't have a problem with math.
My best math teachers, right, yeah.
There was no problem with math, you know, you add and you divide, but the way they were doing it with my son, you know, he's 24 now, and he is an engineer, because I had to help him and say, this is how I did math. And because I showed him how to do math correctly, he, instead of everyday math, I was able to, you know, get him-
I remember.
My daughter calls that old-timers math.
Old timers.
But it worked.
I know, I like it, too.
What I tell my parents when they say the same thing to me is, teach them the way you learned. I'll teach them the way I'm teaching. You teach them the way you learned, and as many strategies as they can get, they will eventually find what makes sense.
Works for them.
Okay. Because that, the way we learn doesn't make sense to some kids, and they come up with a way that makes sense.
Yes.
But you have to offer strategies. You don't offer strategies, if there's only one way ever, then you've got the kids who never get it.
Right. No, I believe there should be many.
So, yeah, I tell my, I do, I tell my parents, go ahead, tell them.
I think you were the one who said that to me. I'm pretty sure.
I've told, I've told more than one parent.
We've had two ERDs already, just specifically focusing on math, because we've, we're attending a state workshop, it's a three-part series. So after Patty and Mark went, the first time, they came back and they shared what the training was all about. And then there's homework to do between sessions. We have, Mark and I are going back in January, but one of the things I had teachers bring, were supposed to bring, so this was interesting for me and very telling, that I asked them to bring student work to the ERD yesterday, where students had to explain some of their math thinking. I had, I had one person who had actual student work and put it up under the document camera.
I didn't put mine up.
No, you had yours, I know, and shared with us how they had done it. The first time, they had sort of left it blank for kids to explain, and kids didn't have enough experience with that. So the second time, they had done it with kids, and they showed the difference, they put in like a fill-in-the-blank, first I did, and they'd have the kids write, then I did, and so the kids had a framework to work from. And then that made all the difference, because the next time they did it, kids were able to-
Yep.
They knew what they needed to do. It was interesting, teachers were not comfortable, and some kids, teachers had work, but they weren't going to put it up and talk about it, because I'm not sure they understood what the student, what the student did to get their answer. I mean, that's, it's, it's tricky, it's tricky. So it was interesting to me, as I sat there going, wow, what would they do now? Because some of these people didn't do their homework like I asked. If it was their kids in their classroom that are doing their homework, what would they do? I did not put anybody on the spot, but we did have a good discussion about, how do you get kids to show their thinking so you know where they're missing?
Well, the other thing I wanted to know is, when they're taking the tests that are wordy, can someone read it to them?
Only if they have accommodations through a 504 or an IEP.
The ones that you identified as having issues with math, are they also identified in the literacy piece, or have you not looked at that?
I didn't look at that, but I could, just, that would be a good cross-
Just to see if there's a link.
Yep, yep, yep.
And it seemed a lot in the, in the third grade-
Guessing there are a few of them.
In the third grade, because that's probably when they're starting to read.
Right, yeah. So we'll spend a little time looking at those strategies. I'd like to look at just instructional strategies in general, and then have the specific conversation about how does that apply to social studies and science, so all staff can be included, because when you focus on just math, then you're leaving out some of the staff members when we really could be talking just instructional strategies and applying it across the board, but math has been a focus for a couple. It's interesting.
That it? Okay, the final audit, RHR Smith.
That sounds like math, doesn't it?
That sounds like a little math.
Real math. It's a lot of math, I read it.
A lot of math.
A lot of math.
But yeah, you have an electronic version of, it's a three-page audit. And they finished the towns at the same time. And everything, everything they tested was in compliance, and they found nothing that they didn't test that stood out as being out of compliance. So, and that everything matched smoothly with the town and, and I probably did it by town. But I do know, yeah, the schools.
Yeah. Remember a couple of years ago, we separated them out?
Yeah.
It was a good move.
Good move.
Yes, we know.
Yes, because it's really difficult to combine them, how to pull the schools' information out of the town's audit, so.
But the Blackbaud, that has the payroll, you're saying?
Basically, what I'm looking at, in fact, I had a, a web seminar today. Blackbaud is wanting to change and have Paycor do payroll, okay? Because they don't want to deal with the taxes anymore and all that stuff. So I've got a couple of years. And so they, about six or nine months ago, they brought in one. And I said, well, I'm going to sit back and see, and it flocked within a month. And I was like, okay.
Get in.
And I thought, okay, good, they'll just continue to do payroll, well, that, no, they didn't. So now they brought in Paycor. Paycor is a very large company.
Sounds.
And I basically kind of just went through today, you know. The, the advantages of it are, you know, everybody can see things electronically. You know, if you want to go, if an employee wants to go buy a car and they need six weeks of pay stubs, they can just pull it off their phone. There is a time card app, you know, people can just punch in and just log in and punch in. So there's a lot of different pieces to it. And I, my biggest concern was, I said, how can I guarantee that you're going to pay the 941s? And the IRS and the state? And I said, I, you know, I want confirmation the day you make it. I can see that you've done it. And he goes, yes, we have that. And I said, okay. So there was a lot of quick questions, because when it come down to the money questions, I don't have all the answers for that one yet. Because I've, we, as part of my annual renewal, I pay into Blackbaud for payroll. But Paycor wants their own separate thing. So it's like you pay, just like A D P or any of these other ones. You do payroll and they charge you like so much.
Per employee, yeah.
Yeah, and then that's, and then they do the transfer, they, they do all the direct deposits, you know. You still have to have somebody like input all the salaries, input all the hours, you still show all of that. It's just you're using a different window set. It's one of these things where I said, well, I just want to keep asking a lot more questions, and I want a lot more answers. I want to keep playing with it, you know, so we can still have these, like, once a week, I get an hour, I go in and I get to play with it. I mean, it, it does have a lot of advantages for, for people here, for, you know. And it pretty much flows the same way as if I did it to the.
Right, you have to do that information anyway.
Right, and they do all the 1099s and they do all the, not the 1099s, but they do all the W 2s at the end of the year and all that stuff, which, that's.
What, otherwise you were doing that?
I do, I possibly will. That's my Christmas break.
Yeah, but once it's in computer, it's easy to get those.
It's not, it's, it's not bad.
No, but I mean, you're giving them all that information, and it's in their computer, and they, of course, you would generate a W 2 from that.
Right, it's the same like with Blackbaud right now. Like, I, I just put in the sheets, I, I review everything in a summary, I make sure everything's in the right place.
Yes, and would you be able to continue to see it? Well, then that's good.
Yeah, it's just that they, Blackbaud themselves do not want to have to deal with all the payroll.
The payroll is always a problem.
My other thing is, Susan, I want to make sure they can import into Blackbaud without a problem. So, and they are working directly with Blackbaud to do that. Their goal is to have it so that they can automatically input by April. I said, okay. And if I sign something before March, that I won't have to pay for the implementation fees, which is a couple thousand dollars. I'm like, okay, so I'm thinking about that. But I said, all right, what if I did it where we sign it, but I don't start till July 1st?
Yeah, July 1st, yeah.
So that way I start new contracts. And so that's kind of what.
Yeah, you want to do July 1st.
I wanted July 1st, one, because it's the beginning of a fiscal year, I get, it's clean. All new contracts start July 1st. The other thing, too, is that gives two months, so if they screw up, they screw up on somebody else and not me.
Yeah.
I mean, so there's a lot of, you know, like.
But it could be thousands of dollars more because of that, if we wait.
Yeah. Yeah, and I still am working with Blackbaud, waiting for responses back from them. And I, because I've said, listen, I've already paid you. And this is the other thing, too, is my renewal was in July. So I said, I want to know how much my Blackbaud is going to go down.
It should go down.
Because I don't have payroll with you. I have payroll with Paycor, and I'm just kind of seeing how much more, you know, or what is it going to be?
Well, we'll see that during the budget process. I'm sure you'll have answers by then.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm just, you know, like I said, this is, they're just, this is a new process. They're, they're taking their time with this one, because they've already been slapped on the other one, so I just.
But I feel I've heard of Paycor before.
Paycor's quite big. It's, you know, it'll work, I'm sure, but it's just, I will try to get.
I'm sure you'll do it.
I'm assuming all of these programs have high levels of security and encryption.
And that's the same about Paycor.
Somebody always gets into something.
It's been a big concern. A large district just got ransomware, their financial computer just got ransomware, but it was all in-house. So having our systems on a high-secure cloud-based solution is a, a good, good solution to have versus when we did have it in-house.
Well, that's the same with Blackbaud. Blackbaud is still, it's outside, it's cloud-based, it's not part of our internal system as well, so.
Can't hack in.
If my laptop gets down, I just will pick up the other one.
And there's point-to-point encryption, too, so it's secure between the two ends, and nobody can get in the middle to grab data and information. It's good to have.
Good, keep it safe.
Yep. Having a good, organized, clean audit in a public entity is always a good thing when it happens. Everybody says, that's great, that's when you don't, when people ask a lot of questions. So I want to thank Kim because of the summertime, when these guys, the suits are in here.
Round of applause.
And she's making, she's carrying over all these books to them, and they're doing their thing, and I'm going, all right.
Hope it works.
It's a lot of work, so thank you, Kim. These things just don't happen by themselves, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, she's a gem.
Okay, so the final result was, we all were okay, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Eat your fruits and vegetables and get some exercise.
That's it, right, okay. So, let's see, we do not require an executive session this evening.
We should plan it for January, though. I did plan, but without Judy, I think that would be remiss. So let's, let's plan on it for January.
Yeah, okay. And let's see, I think that's it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, 5:37. Got to go, second.
Take care of that. All those in favor?
Amen.